Good afternoon, Mr. President, Vice President, members of the Board and Madam CEO. I am Fernando Grillo and I serve as Chairman of the Board of Directors of Aspira Inc. of Illinois. To my right, I'm accompanied by Mr. Anibal Taboas who serves as our CEO and who is also known this morning, or this afternoon I should say, as Speaker 37. We, in the interest of time and with your approval, we're going to just have one statement so we can move things along.
Thank you.
Okay. We're here this afternoon to respectfully request your support and approval of the item on the agenda this morning that would allow us to establish a new campus. This new campus allows Aspira to create a state-of-the-art facility that will provide our students access to innovative technology and resources that will be integrated into their business and finance curriculum and their educational program and will also allow for access for the community. Over the past two years, Aspira and the community have strategized on the school model and have already secured a $12 million capital investment toward building the new facility to house this, a new public charter school. This morning, we thank you for your leadership and support during this renewal process and we request your consideration and approval of this item. We look forward to working with you, and the CEO and your leadership's team, as we work together to serving the children of our great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. Appreciate you coming down.
Our next speaker, please, Okema Lewis.
Good day, Board members, staff and all present. Oh, and I'm sorry, your presentations. This is the one time I was late, I was late. Material for the Board members, whoever it would apply to as our CEO, our General Counselor and our student. Good day. My name is Okema Lewis and as you receive the material in front of you, I'm here today to address concerns that three of your Board members are aware of and perhaps two may not be. I was given a wonderful beginning as a parent under Dr. Escocia, who has always encouraged and supported parental involvement. Dr. Hines, I worked in the Hope School when she was a principal, and Mr. Ruiz is a name listed on the formal complaint that I filed against the district and the Illinois State Board of Education when they did not comply with the terms of Title I as it would apply to parental involvement. You have a copy of that document which was filed first with the United States Department of Education, April 7th, 2010, including electronic submission that I had provided to CPS on numerous occasions and they did not respond. I also have the concluding information that supports that today, you continue unfortunately, not under your administration of course, with regard to parental involvement, to disregard and disrespect their poverty level income bringing money into this district because you have created a group called the PIAB which does not allow for any support for parents for their school-related expenses, for transportation and/or childcare. You also have a department whose hands have been tied under the leadership of your current local school council office. The reason why this is so critical is because process and procedure, one of the documents you have in front of you comes from the Department of Education and it says that parents are to be included when you are input in selecting programs, activity and procedures. And I must continue because I know I have a little more time to speak.
Ms. Lewis, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I will. Today you will be voting on your budget transfers of various amounts of money. Number 32, parking passes for school staff, $1,000. Number 35, travel expenses. Number 107, a COS to receive car fare reimbursement when attending chief meetings. Number 157, transfer to cover cost of car fare reimbursement for network staff, $2,000.
Ms. Lewis, thank you. Our next speaker, please.
My apologies, I will continue to address my concerns as I have brought them to your attention that you are in violation of Title I. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Joel Rodriguez. I am a parent of four children at Lafayette Elementary School. C.S. Lewis wrote that "The task of modern educators is not to cut down jungles but to irrigate deserts." Could it be that C.S. Lewis anticipated a day that our educational system would fail our children and that instead of stirring up curiosity and challenging our children with rigorous, relevant and thought-provoking work, we bogged down students with endless hours of testing? Because of the policies that are currently in place, our educators are burdened with a heavy task of irrigating deserts. And so, teachers like Mr. Wyble go above and beyond to provide rich opportunities like Lafayette's unique string orchestra program which three of my kids are a part of. Many of our teachers at Lafayette that with much patience and commitment care for more than 150 sped students and they diligently strive to provide the best care and instruction. With the little that we have been given at Lafayette, we have created an oasis in the midst of this desert. And yet, you all say, nope, your oasis is being underutilized. Parents and students have made the case very clear why Lafayette and many of our schools should stay open. The question is, are you all listening? There were many students this morning in front of this very building and parents with a clear message that closing schools is not the answer and that this is wrong and we are all fed up. This is the only thing, this is the last thing I'm going to say. It's the last thing I'm going to say. Author Victor Hugo wrote that "He who opens school doors closes a prison." What is school closings going to do?
Mr. Rodriguez.
I have witnessed a disinvestment in many of our community schools.
Mr. Rodriguez, excuse me, can you please conclude?
I will conclude.
Thank you.
I've witnessed many disinvestment in our community schools and I think it's time for you all to step up and do what is right and invest and not close schools down.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 27, Laura Flores, followed by Speaker 28, Devanda Buck, and then they will be followed by the group from Marcus Garvey. They have identified two designated speakers and a student, Mr. President, so that will be Speaker number 33, Krista Thomas; Speaker 38, Taisha Whitmore; and the student is number 56, Ashan Johnson, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Flores and I have a daughter who is a freshman at Noble Goldar College Prep. My daughter has special needs, some will say special ed. We struggled to find a school that was able to meet her needs. After trying three different schools, we actually found a charter school. At the present time, like I mentioned, she goes to Noble Goldar College Prep. At Noble, she receives additional support that she needs to be successful. We chose Noble because of its reputation based on academics and strong school culture. I know that my daughter would get support, would be pushed and would be in a safe and nurturing environment. Noble has been a blessing for our family, but unfortunately, there are too many families that don't have access to great education that my daughter is receiving at Noble. I know that there are thousands of students on the waiting list to get into Noble campuses. Please, support the increase in enrollment that is being requested for Noble campuses so that many families can have access to high-quality education that my daughter is receiving at Noble. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Our next speaker, please, Devanda Buck.
My name is Devanda Buck. I'm the local school.
Ms. Buck, could you raise the microphone and speak into it, please? Thank you.
I'm the local school council chairperson for West Pullman Elementary School. I'd like to say, there's no evidence supporting your claims that our kids will receive a higher-quality education by closing our school. There's lots of data to support quite the contrary. In fact, that same evidence shows that what CPS and other so-called education departments nationwide intend to do is disrupt already, disrupt entire already disproportionately underfunded neighborhoods like the one I live in with my children. Instead of being defeated, we started looking for and creating opportunities for our children to succeed. We brought in the Boys and Girls Clubs of America who, in addition to kids programming, have a host of activities for parents ranging from dance classes to informational workshops on having healthy families and communities. We have a parent center, school store, and a mobile fresh food market where parents can get the supplies needed to implement the healthy recipes that they learn at our gatherings, and a host of other community partnerships. We have after-school and Saturday programs at our facility. This is a beacon of light for not only our kids but the entire neighborhood. So for CPS to claim that their only justification for destroying yet another neighborhood and partnering with the Department of Justice in selling our kids to the jail systems and underfunding real educational initiatives in favor of fancy office fixtures, expensive perks and bonuses for themselves, is that our building is underutilized? Maybe some of that money should have been used to buy bus cards and come down and visit us, or better still, maybe provide us with higher-quality teachers, social-emotional programming, adequately supply our schools and staff our building. Studies show closing schools fails neighborhoods, fails kids and fails families, ultimately failing us all. How do public education officials...
Ms. Buck, excuse me, can you please conclude?
How do public education officials justify promoting chartered, paid education systems? Will you be responsible for closing our schools and killing our kids and destroying our neighborhoods and communities? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buck. Our next speakers then are from the Marcus Garvey Group, please. As they approach then, the next group will be from Williams School and that would be Speaker number 31, Lillian Allen, followed by Speaker 59, Alexander Hall, and then Speaker number 32, Clarence White.
Good afternoon. My name is Taisha Whitmore. I'm a parent. My children currently attend Marcus Garvey School. They were able to attend Marcus Garvey because of the No Child Left Behind Act. I received a letter probably about two weeks ago from CEO Barbara Bird Bennett basically stating that Mount Vernon will be the welcoming school. Marcus Garvey is the school that the kids need to stay at and I have outlined some information as to why Marcus Garvey should stay open and as a parent, why I chose Marcus Marcus Garvey is higher performing than Mount Vernon and first I would like to say this, I am not here to tear down any school, but since it was a welcoming school, this is what I have to go against to show you. Garvey is still higher performing than Mount Vernon in areas such as reading and science. Garvey composite scores for the ASAT 2012 is 77.3. Mount Vernon is 73.4. The school culture and climate, according to CPS, My Voice, My School, rated Marcus Garvey as organized, strong culture and climate. As for Mount Vernon, not yet organized, several weaknesses with school culture and climate not set up for success. Now, me as a parent, that's not a place that I want to send my kids. Marcus Garvey is already the place that they need to be and stay. Also, school safety, we have parent partnership. Great schools also recommended them at an 8.6 out of 10. So as a parent who's looking for a good school...
Ms. Whitmore, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
Where you're trying to take our children is a school that is, that is a school that is, have been on probation for nine years and this school year currently is not on probation. So for the last seven months, they have not been on probation and you're now considering that as a higher-performing school than Marcus Garvey.
Thank you, Ms. Whitmore. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Krista Thomas. I am a parent of Marcus Garvey School. I have four children and attend Marcus Garvey School. I've had eight in total. Marcus Garvey is an excellent neighborhood school. We have a bright, clean facility. We have a rigorous curriculum, beautiful, well-stocked library, several labs, including a computer lab and a hands-on science lab which allows our students to take part in experiments in class. We have arts, foreign language and a fitness curriculum. We have a free pre-K program. We also have a full kindergarten program, air-conditioning every classroom, national award-winning programs such as our SEL, Social Emotional Learning Program, which has received national acclamation. Other schools have come to our school from out of state to come and see what it is we are doing that's so right in our school. Also, we have KWN, which is Kid Witness News Program, which provides our children with the ability to write and produce their own mini-movies. So our children are producing movies and they have actually won awards. As a matter of fact, last year, they went to Japan, Tokyo, Japan. This year, they won first place and they're going to New York, all expenses paid. With the culture and climate of our school that makes our students feel safe, that makes the parents feel safe knowing that their students are going to a school, that reinforces what we are teaching our children at home. Marcus Garvey is an asset both to our neighborhood and to our students. We also have a learning garden which was provided by our own staff, by their own money, and takes the children and allows them to learn how to nurture and culture and grow which is productive to our neighborhood. And then, once the produce is grown, they turn around, yes ma'am, they turn around and give it to the community. So Marcus Garvey is an asset to the community. We do not want to see our school leave. And as a matter of fact, all this is without CPS funding. So imagine what we could do with your support.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Our next speaker, please, Ashan Johnson.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashan Johnson. I am in 3rd grade at Marcus Garvey School. I used to attend private school before coming to Marcus Garvey. At first, I did not want to leave my old school because I thought that Marcus Garvey would be like other public schools. I thought that the school would be full of violence. I believe that Garvey would be dangerous with kids fighting every day, bringing weapons to school along with gangs hurting and threatening students. However, I found out that Garvey was a great school to be at. I feel safe inside of my school and there is structure. I love the fact that there is structure because clear rules are set and expected to be followed. We also have a, we also have great security and we have an SEL program which stands for Social Emotional Learning. I love the SEL, our SEL program at our school. We go to a peace center to discuss problems and follow problem-solving steps that help us to pick the best solution for our problems. We were featured on Fox 32 News last year for SEL and I was featuring a video for the Collaborative for Academic, Social and Emotional Learning Organization which is known as Castle Group, discussing how positively the SEL program has helped me to improve my academic and social skills. According to an article I read in the Chicago Sun-Times on April 4th, it points out that Garvey has a well-stocked library and a wall-winning garden and art room, computer lab and several small science labs. These are things that you say that you want all schools to have but intentionally left out these facts on the fact sheet given to the parents and the community. Why would you take Marcus Garvey away from us? We have a family, Barbara Bird Bennett and Mr. Vitale, you came to our school. You loved how we were quiet. Like when you come into that building, you know how it was so quiet, we were doing our work, we had everything we wanted to do. And Barbara Bird Bennett, you tried to do a surprise, but we were all ready. We were all ready for everything. You tried, you tried, thought we was all ready, but we were ready for everything. But I just wanted to say, why are you closing Marcus Garvey when it has everything that you say that it wants us to have? Do you really care about our schools, our safety and our futures? Thank you.
We need to thank that young man for his... We want to thank you for your eloquence.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker...
I also want to thank you for hosting me last week at your school. I appreciated the opportunity to visit.
I think he's ready for the debate team.
I think so.
Thank you. Our next speakers then, Speaker number 31, Lillian Allen, last call for Lillian Allen. Last call for Speaker 59, Alex Hall. Moving on to Speaker number 32, Clarence White. Last call for Speaker 32, Clarence White. Moving on to Speaker number 34, please, Amisha Patel, followed by Speaker 35, Martin Ritter. Followed by Speaker 41, Clannetta Clark, please. Ms. Patel.
Good afternoon. My name is Amisha Patel and I'm Executive Director of Grassroots Collaborative. I'm standing here with CPS parents and students who are boycotting school because they're here to send a message despite threats that their voice matters around testing and around closings. The argument that you, that you as Board members and the mayor have made about closing schools is that we have no money and therefore no choice but to close 54 schools. If this was about resources, why do you keep millions of, sending millions of dollars to Wall Street every year? Every year CPS pays $36 million in toxically high interest rates to banks like Bank of America and Goldman Sachs. These deals were supposed to save CPS money, but they don't. Banks charge Chicago Public Schools 4% to 6% interest while they borrow this money practically for free after they crash the economy and we bail them out. Big banks are profiting while schools are closing. This is the real status quo. I'm here to submit petition signed by over 3,100 people asking you to renegotiate these big bank swindles. After jeopardizing our jobs and our homes, now these banks are coming for our children's schools. $36 million could keep Calhoun, King, Garvey and so many other schools open and put real investments into those schools so they have the best shot of succeeding. We are delivering this first batch of supporters, but we will continue to collect signatures because it's morally reprehensible to leave this money on the table. Other municipalities have taken action against toxic interest rate swaps. San Francisco kept the Asian Art Museum open by demanding J.P. Morgan Chase renegotiate their toxic swaps. Los Angeles voted to get a better deal from banks. Oakland voted to boycott Goldman Sachs and is moving to officially disbar the bank from any future business with the city. President Vitale...
Ms. Patel, excuse me, can you please conclude?
You have said that the decision to close 54 schools is a difficult one. It appears that the more difficult decision is to demand that the Bank of America, Goldman Sachs and other Wall Street interests renegotiate these swaps. So we ask you, will you make the hard decision? Will you fight for every dollar and demand that Wall Street renegotiate these swaps? Will you put the interests of students in poverty ahead of the banks? I'd like a response to...
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Our next speaker, please, is Speaker number 35, Martin Ritter. Next speaker.
We need teachers. We need bucks. We need the money that the banks took.
Our next speaker, please, Speaker number 35, Martin Ritter.
Hello, my name is Corbinae Daniels. I'm here risking my PSIE.
Sorry.
Speaker number 35, please.
I wouldn't mind ceding my time to those young people that are in our schools. Would you consider giving them a chance to speak?
No, sir, you signed up.
I did, I did. My name is Martin Ritter. I'm a member of the Whitney M. Leung Local School Council. I come here today because I read something recently that the Illinois, I'm sorry, IAASE, which the school leadership of CPS is currently a part of, is testifying in support of raising special education classroom sizes. That's wrong. Special education students are most fragile young people, should have small intimate classroom sizes with properly-trained staff. Why is CPS's leadership currently part of a lobbying group that is advocating for these classroom sizes to be raised? The teachers, parents and other special education advocacy groups have testified in opposition to this. I'd really like to know why, that's importantly, and hopefully one side of the Board knows what the leadership side of the district is actually doing. The second thing, sir, is that, and to CPS, is that you have stated repeatedly that you must close schools for budgetary reasons. How come you refuse to publicly request that all TIF surplus money be returned to the schools and for big banks like Bank of America and Loop Capital renegotiate their toxic swaps? You have left 30, I'm sorry, $300 million on the table that would be easily used to stop any school closings. And lastly, a recent study from the broader, I'm sorry, broader, bolder approach to education says that so-called reform of school closings and charter expansions in cities like Chicago, New York and DC have failed. Why are you continuing the status quo of these failed policies? This is not right. We need to take a more holistic approach, okay? CEO, I saw your facial expressions when you saw that wonderful child express himself. If that school has those things that many of the schools that you are considering have students like that, but they're at school obviously right now, walk through all these schools, all of them, find out exactly what resources they have. Take these schools and give them a thorough examination. Don't let people who have zero experience in classroom teaching and learning make these decisions. People from Boston Consulting Group and other random third-party organizations don't know what happened to our children.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 41, Clannetta Clark, followed by Speaker 42, Jalena Leslie, followed by the designated speakers for KIP, 43, Melinda Herred, and Speaker 54, Amaka Unaka. Clannetta Clark, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jalena Leslie and I'm here on behalf of Parkman Elementary Science and Tech Academy. Parkman has been at 245 West 51st Street for 100 years. I have two, two children at Parkman, a 2nd grader and a preschooler. And the oldest person in my family that went to Parkman is 88-years-old, that's still alive right now. The youngest is 4-years-old. My main concern is with the danger zone that they're trying to send to, from Parkman to Sherwood at 57th Street. I live on 48th and Princeton. Parkman is located at 245 West 51st Street. One block west of the 51st Street went right police station. And where I'm standing there, it's a school to the west of me, one block west, and then Parkman is four blocks from me, but Sherwood is eight blocks from me. And that Sherwood is just dangerous, the gangs that's in between the school and Parkman. On Sherwood, it's two opposite gangs. Where Sherwood at, someone just got shot there Monday, four times. Now, I can't take my kids to Sherwood knowing that I've been in this area for 39 years, born and raised in this area, and knowing that how dangerous the gangs is on 57th Street and knowing how dangerous the gangs is across 47th Street. My son told me yesterday, he said, if I go to Sherwood, I'm gonna get shot up. I'm only 4-years-old. How I'm gonna graduate from school and I'm 4-years-old and I'm gonna get shot up? I said, you're not going to Sherwood because they're gonna keep Parkman School open. It's a legend that, you know, it's like, the kids at Parkman School, they feel like it's their home because when there's something going on in other areas in the neighborhood, they can come to Parkman School and feel safe. Okay, I'm coming, I'm coming. But Ms. Bird, this is especially for you. Think about Boston. Think about Janila Watkins. Think about Texas. Think about your two grandkids and what would you do if something happened to them on their way trying to get the better education that you want for them? I love my kids. It takes me too long to get from 48 to 57 to protect my kids. If I can walk three blocks, run three blocks in 1.1 minute when something is wrong with my child, I'd rather for them to stay right there at that school because 57th Street is too far. And I, just like you and everyone else, y'all do any and everything y'all would to protect y'all own. So I say to y'all, may God bless y'all. Ms. Bird, I know you have a heart. I know you love children, but closing Parkman School would not be the right thing, sending them to Sherwood because they won't make it there because how bad the gangs is down there.
Thank you, Ms. Leslie. Our next speaker, please.
I have petitions on 500 that I gave you all.
Good afternoon. My name is Amaka Unaka and I am the Director of Advocacy and Community Engagement for KIP Chicago. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. KIP Chicago has been serving Chicago families since we opened our doors in 2003. We currently serve students on Chicago's West Side and with the material modifications proposed, we will have the opportunity to serve students in Inglewood and beyond. proposed, we will have the opportunity to serve students in Inglewood and beyond. KIP Chicago is part of the National KIP Network of High-Performing Charter Schools. To date, eighty-seven percent of students who have finished eighth grade with us have gone to college. We measure college matriculation, not just college acceptance. We hold ourselves accountable for every student who was with us in elementary school, whether they went off to boarding school, moved out of the state, or lost touch during their high school years. It takes great leaders and teachers to get our KIPsters ready for high school and college. Our dedicated faculty has received several accolades, including the National KIP Excellence in Teaching Award, the Illinois Network of Charter Schools Teacher of the Year Award, and National Board Certification. Of course, we couldn't do this work without the support and partnership of our KIPsters' families and the communities we serve. We are very fortunate to serve families in the North Lyndale and Austin community on Chicago's West Side, and we are pleased to begin serving Inglewood. At KIP, we are a team and family. It takes students, parents, teachers, and the community to prepare our KIPsters for college and beyond. With ten years of serving families on Chicago's West Side, we believe that KIP is a high-quality option for Chicago families, and we greatly appreciate your consideration of our material modifications. Bishop Ed Peacher from Helping Hands of Inglewood was here in support of KIP today but had to leave due to a 1:00 p.m. meeting.
Ms. Unaka, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to leave with you our letters of support from the Inglewood community regarding us coming to, coming to Inglewood. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Melinda Harad, followed by Speaker number forty-seven, Pat Tony, then Speaker forty-eight, Marilena Marchetti, followed by forty-nine, Lisa Pugh, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melinda Harret. I am standing here before you to present the goodness and the quality education that my children are receiving at their KIP school. Communication is contagious at KIP, and I think that is so awesome. I love the fact that the teachers have my children's best interests in mind at all times. Being a part of the KIP team and family has drastically changed my kids. As a parent of a first grader who knows the importance of going to college, it's, it's very exciting for me hearing her chant, "Two thousand twenty-four, we are walking through the door to college." But also, I feel great knowing the teachers are asking me, "Do you know how well your child is doing in reading?" She is now reading in power hour with the upper-grade students. I am also a proud parent of an eighth grader, and because of his hard work, he has been blessed with all kinds of options of having an opportunity for a great high school education. He has been offered a Fulbright Scholarship through a Better Chance Scholarship program to attend any boarding school that is ranked amongst the highest competitive boarding school in the country. I want and hope that you would allow KIP to expand so that Chicago, other Chicago children will have the options to receive the same quality education that my children are receiving at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.